Good evening, everyone. Can you want to hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, good. Once in a while, when I switch back and forth between Zoom and Teams, sometimes my system goes a little haywire.
How's everyone doing?
Okay. How about you, Parker?
Better than the Bills.
I am, uh, just got back from Tokyo last night, so I've got a mild head cold going on for day four, so, um, bear with me.
Through the chair, you're live on HKMTV.
All right. Thanks, Bob. The people that we have here, we've got one, two, three. Give it another minute or two, especially I guess since we're still a little early.
Yeah, here we go.
All right, one, two, three, four, five. All right. Uh, well, good evening, everyone. It is seven PM, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, and I hereby call the playboard meeting to order. First into chapter two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body as well as members of the public may access this meeting via virtual means. Participants may access the meeting through the remote meeting link as posted on the meeting's agenda and through the town's online calendar. When requested by law or allowed by the chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so by raising their hand uh, or otherwise signaling their intent to speak. This meeting will be recorded. Please take care to mute your microphone unless you've been recognized by the chair. We will now confirm attendance of members. Please respond uh, with present if you are on the call. Uh, Rob Benson. Rob's not here. Uh, Jane?
Present.
Ron? Elise?
I'm here.
Hi, Elise. Matthew?
Present.
Michael? Don't see Michael anywhere. Uh, Vikaseth?
I'm here.
Parker?
Present.
And Gary is here as well. So, uh, we do have a quorum. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, just quickly looking at the agenda, um, we will go ahead and, uh, we're gonna reorder things a little bit, but, um, like we often do, we're gonna go ahead and knock out the A and Rs first. Um, and then, uh, we're gonna take the hearings a little out of order, um, just based on a request of one of the applicants. Um, we're going to move, uh, Whisper Way forward. So, um, let's go ahead and get started with the A and Rs. So the first one would be, uh, Zero Chestnut Street, twenty-six Kimball, Michael Amina and, uh, Wissam Seder. Um, John, do you want to give us a quick overview of what's before us on this one? John, we can't hear you. I don't think you're muted, but you were very quiet there.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Maybe I was just being quiet. All right. So Joe, uh, is, might not be able to make this part of the meeting, so he asked me to present for him. And I believe Sam, the other property owner, uh, on this A and R is also on, so he can, he can answer any questions, uh, that I might not be able to answer. So, um, the proposal is, so this is Chestnut Street. Uh, let me see where Chestnut Street is. I think it's here's Kimball and Smith, and I believe Chestnut Street is up here.
Uh, it's not shown on that.
Yeah, it's not shown on the plan, but for bearings, that's Chestnut Street, right? So this is part of the land for some of you who are on the board, uh, that may remember. They came before the board with a preliminary subdivision, but fully said they're gonna do solar. Uh, that is still in it, they're still anticipating doing that, but this is for a certain parcel of land that was separate from that, um, that some of the neighbors had, uh, approached the owner, I guess, to take over some of the land. So this is addressing some of that, and it's focused right around here in parcel A. So this is the existing dwelling at twenty-six Kimball. And this is the larger Umanalot. And this is this is the parcel A that is proposed to be taken from this larger lot and conveyed to this twenty-six Kimball. And it is, uh, half an acre, a little over half an acre, twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine square feet. Uh, my understanding is there's an existing shed that is encroaching on this land. So there's an agreement between the two owners to take this piece of land and convey it over there. Uh, and so this is changing those property lines to do that. So parcel A will not be a building lot and will, um, eventually be absorbed into twenty-six Kimball. So I'll do my, I guess I'll do my brief report at this point as well. Um, non-buildable lot, therefore we don't have to worry about frontage or, uh, lot area because it's just transferring over a non-buildable lot, so it doesn't constitute a subdivision and appears eligible for endorsement by the board.
All right. Seems reasonably straightforward. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
No.
All right. Seeing no questions, I will entertain a motion to endorse the A and R for Zero Chestnut slash twenty-six Kimball Road.
So moved.
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, um, I can't see you. John, do you mind going off the shared screen? Makes it a little easier for me to see who's joined. Um, all right.
Gary, I'm here. This is Rob.
Assuming no further discussion, uh, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob's yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Uh, is Ron on yet?
So Gary, Ron emailed me and said he wouldn't be able to make the meeting tonight.
Uh, he did. Okay. All right. Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Uh, Michael?
Yes.
Vikaseth?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Motion passes. Um, and I guess the next A and R would be for Zero Fawn Ridge. You wanna pull that one up and give us the overview, John?
Sure. So this is an application by Halt, the Hopkinton Area Land Trust. And it pertains to this area, parcel C four. So this is a unique one, uh, and Maury Gasser from Halt is on the call if there's any other questions. Um, my guess, and I don't know if this is true, but it would be my guess, if you look at where we are in town, this is the town boundary between Hopkinton and Ashland. So my guess is it's a larger piece of land than this, and it contains a portion of land here. But since that's in Ashland, we don't have the authority to do anything about it. So it's really this small piece of land, four hundred and two point seven square feet. Uh, I understand there was an encroachment, um, from this property onto Halt land, and so this is much like the other uh, A and R, this is addressing that encroachment to allow for the purchase and conveyance of this land, uh, to Hopkins and, uh, remove the encroachment, uh, due to it being their own land. So again, non-buildable parcel marked on the plan to be conveyed to this other, uh, owner at a later date, therefore it's not a subdivision and appears eligible for endorsement.
Sorry, John, I'm not quite following, 'cause that little itty-bitty carve out there.
Yep, right here.
Um,
this is Ashland.
Oh, that's all Ashland.
In Ashland.
Okay, so the dark line there, that is the straight line there, that's the
This is the town boundary. Yeah, the town.
Okay, so the land that, uh, is the land that's being carved out for parcel C four, like where it says area four oh two point seven square feet, that is all Halt land?
Uh, I believe, yes, I believe so, and it's in Hopkinton. This is Halt land that's in Ashland.
Okay.
My guess is they're doing two A and Rs, one in Ashland, one in Hopkinton.
Okay. All right. Maury, thanks for joining us tonight.
Hi.
Are you able to give us just a little bit more explanation of, uh, just to add to John's summary of likely some encroachment there and then?
Yes, there, there is a bunch more substantial encroachment on the Ashland side, which is, it, there wouldn't be any point in trying to trying to fix that. So we're gonna convey that piece of land as what, as well as this little four hundred square feet that happens to be on Hopkinton side.
Okay, so that makes sense. So that circle kind of continues around back up.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, sorry, you know, it's funny, I was having a hard time visualizing that. Is
I know, 'cause it's not, it's not connected to Hopkins land right now, so it, it looks funny.
Okay. How did they, just out of curiosity, how did they encroach upon it?
Uh, fence yard, uh, kind of a permanent fence.
Uh, okay.
God knows what else is in the, in the yard. Yeah.
Okay.
Really our fault for not noticing this years ago when it happened.
Okay.
So.
Um, questions or comments from the board?
No.
Okay, well, um, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to endorse the A and R for Zero Fawn Ridge and, uh, Hopkinton Area Land Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Right, assuming no further discussion. Uh, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Um, sorry, John, can you go off the screen? My my cheat sheet here of my order just went dark, so, um, I'll figure this out. Uh, Matthew?
Yes.
Uh, Michael?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Uh, Gary is a yes. Did I miss anybody? All right. I don't think so. Motion carries. Um, so thank you, Maury, for jumping on and, um, good luck with, uh, glad you were able, oh.
One more item. Yes, we also request a waiver of the hundred dollar application fee as we've done in the past for, uh, A and Rs.
All right, uh, I'm comfortable with that. Halt has a limited budget. Um, any other questions or concerns from the board?
No.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to waive the application fee for Halt on this A and R.
So moved.
Second.
Rob, second.
All right, assuming no further discussion. Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Jane is a yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well.
Did you ask Elise?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Um, okay, so those are our two A and Rs, um, and I did say that we would go to the Whisper Way uh, amendments. Um, so, uh, first I will entertain a motion to open, uh, the hearing for Whisper Way.
Rob Benson, so moved.
Rob, second.
All right, Jane with the motion, Rob with the second. Uh, assuming no discussion. Rob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Ron? Nope, Ron's not here. Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Um, all right, well, um, I think we have, uh, see the applicant, I see Craig and Mark are on. Mark, I'm assuming you're gonna be doing the speaking tonight?
Yes.
All right, we'll see if we can, uh, hopefully get to this pretty quickly. You want to give us the background and why you are here before us?
Yes, good evening, and thank you for taking us out of order. We appreciate it. This is a, a technical amendment to the special permit and definitive plan approvals that this board approved in late summer, the decisions for which were issued in October and recorded. The amendments reflect the fact that through the process of working with the Open Space Committee, the Open Space Committee had certain recommendations for minor adjustments to the open space, which were inconsistent with the plans that were referenced in the two decisions. Um, the the plans have been redrawn based on the Open Space Committee recommendations. The open space within the Whisper Way development itself has not, uh, will not change at all from the plans that were originally approved. So there was a small parcel of land in the Whisper Way development that we were going to add to the open space component. And it turned out that the Open Space Committee didn't want that piece. They would rather have had uh, a, a different section of area on the adjoining land on a plan that this board, uh, recently endorsed as part of an A and R submission. So the request tonight is simply to further amend both the definitive plan approval and the special permit approval to reference these, uh, most recently drawn plans. And then we have uh, two other minor requests related to waivers.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Um, do we have anyone from Open Space on the call? Okay, that's unfortunate, I probably should have, oh, did I hear somebody?
I don't know.
This is Craig Nation. I just chimed, I just unmuted myself. Uh, if no one from Open Spaces is there, I, I was the one that presented to them and walked with them, uh, if I can answer anything, I could try.
Okay.
Well, I'm also in Open Space, so I can
Oh, yeah, Jane.
Oh, yes, of course. Thank you, Jane. Um, well, I think what would, uh, so, um, we do have a, uh, outline to follow, and I'm gonna try to accelerate this quite a bit. Um, and I think that some of this we can we can, uh, we can streamline, but, um, I think first it'd be nice just to see the drawings and just go through the details of what exactly is proposed to be changed here.
Okay, so I can show that quickly, Mr. Chairman, if I'm able to share my screen.
All right, we can see your screen.
Okay, spare with me a second here. So this is the plan that was discussed in the late summer and fall. And the Whisper Way development is this section at the upper end of the plan. And this area here that's shown in red and part of what is called on the Open Space Plan, the Whisper Way Plan as parcel A, this small section, which is striped in red, was proposed to be added to the open space and dedicated to the town. And the Open Space Committee didn't really see any value in that piece. And what they preferred instead was additional land in this adjoining section that Ravenwood also owns that I refer to as the Valleywood Open Space. And that's, that area, if you will, was, um, on the revised plans is now not shown as open space, it's shown as parcel A. The open space in Whisper Way will be the same as was originally approved, and that area has been added down here on the Valleywood Open Space Development, which again uh, was recently endorsed by the by your board, so that will allow us to convey that land as modified to the town.
Okay. And, um, so is it an even land swap or are you adding additional open space?
I believe it was pretty even. And the other thing we have done, and let me bring up another plan.
I can elaborate on that a little bit if you'd like.
Sure, great, okay.
It, it is an even land swap. If you look at the, uh, I call it the corridor heading out to Valleywood, you'll see that forty-five-ish degree angle.
Yep.
Uh, down at the southern end, you'll see, uh, the corridor was at that point, uh, totally, i- it sort of touched the wetlands there. So we softened that corner a little bit to, so that they could get a trail in without going into the wetlands. And then the additional bit of land was given to, uh, the, the corner closest to Valleywood so that they could, uh, gain access to an easement for a potential trail.
Okay. Thanks, Craig.
But the land was, the, the swap was, uh, the same footprint. The same area, the same amount of land.
And can you just clarify on the drawing? What, I'm assuming the blue lines are wetland or resource areas?
It looks like you have resource area as well as a hundred foot, uh, buffer zone.
Okay, and then what is the green?
Green is some existing trails that were out there, it looks like to me.
Okay. I guess the only question I have is, so that, that shaded out area up by parcel A.
One.
The, the parcel that, that's, uh, that, that is not gonna be open space, the, the, the hatched area up there?
Yeah, parcel A one you're referring to.
Yeah, I think it's, if you can, Mark, if you can zoom in a little bit.
The hashed out area, yeah, it's mostly open there. It's sort of like a, a field that was originally going to be a septic area, so it had gotten cleared. And, uh, we sort of remediated it, but there is easily, um, accessible trail around that.
Okay. I was just curious, I know like in general, Open Space always tells us they prefer bigger chunks of land. Um, and so I was just curious, maybe, uh, Jane, you could comment if there was any concerns about this appendage that sticks, I mean, it's not huge. But this kind of elongated appendage now that sticks into that chunk of open space.
Sure, it made for a contiguous trail from, um, the road, the path comes up from, um, basically Wood Street, there's an access that you can get there and you can, we wanted the trail to be contiguous all the way out to Valleywood.
Oh, yeah, I know on the space that you're adding, but the, the, the space, the, the square footage, the
Well, it would felt like it was isolated. Um, and that we would, we would have, it would be more valuable to have this more contiguous, um, path through the beaut, the woods that are really quite lovely.
Okay. All right.
If I may.
Yes.
Just, just to add to that, the, again, that parcel A one was originally slated as the septic area for the whole neighborhood, but we were able to get septic systems on each lot, so that land did get cleared and, uh, it, it got uh, I guess, is open space, sorry, it is unnaturalized, so, and again, then they saw the land, they just found it more valuable in a different location, so.
Okay.
That, that's all.
All right, well, thank you. I think that's a, a useful explanation. Um, and then, uh, Mark, you said there's two waivers you're asking for?
Yeah, so the, uh, the waiver request, one waiver request is uh, to modify a, uh, construction spec dealing with granite curbing at some of the roadway roundings. And Craig and or Chris, if you can kind of explain that, I think it was our intent to mention that waiver uh, back in August, and we just got lost in the, um, intense discussion we had at that time on Open Space. So we're we're bringing that waiver request forward.
Okay, so it's only the one, that's why I, I only saw one waiver request, but I think, I thought you had mentioned two other things. Okay, so it's only the one, that's why I, I only saw one waiver request, but I think, I thought you had mentioned two other things in addition to the.
And then the second waiver re- I'm sorry, the second waiver request is um. To ask if you can waive all or some of the application fees in connection with this application because we. Um, I don't know, I guess we, we feel that we've um tried to go through this process of. Working with the open space committee and that has resulted in us having to further tweak the decision that was made by this board earlier.
Yep, seems reasonable, we're doing this largely for open space, so. Um, okay, well, let's go ahead and uh, we're gonna quickly work through the outline here, um, John's staff report.
So this is uh, pretty straightforward. Um, as they described, really just changing the lot lines, the waiver is something the board is gonna have to debate. Um. It is a waiver from the subdivision regs, so it's a, not in substantial request. Um, the one thing I want to point out is in the conditions for this. Um, we have not received revised concept plans or engineered plans. For the subdivision, so we would want to get those before the issuance of any other building permits. Just so we have full updated complete plan sets to go along with the permits.
Okay.
What it, what exactly are you uh, looking for, John?
So under the special permit, there's an open space concept plan that needs to be updated. Um, and then the definitive plan stamped plans showing the open space need to be updated. So we've got an easement plan currently and we've got that sketch plan. So neither one of those really achieve what we're looking for in the.
I, I, I'd be, assuming we move forward, I'd be satisfied um, with a condition just that, that uh, addresses that, I don't, I don't wanna. Make you guys go do additional work unnecessarily, so.
Well, the other thing here too, um, John, is that because we're not modifying parcel A to grant. Some of that to the town, the, the original definitive plan is actually not changing but for that easement.
So, so there is something that's changing though.
Uh, the, the easement area is changing, that's correct, but that easement area is already shown on the A and R uh, plan that the board just recently endorsed.
Okay, so do you not have a, a updated definitive plan set that you could just send over to us? We're not looking to slow this down, we just want a full set of updated complete plans for our records.
Okay, um, well, is it possible to just modify the one sheet that has changed?
Yeah.
And I think if the board is willing to make that a condition of approval, I think we'll, we'll comply with that.
Yep, I, I, again, I think that's reasonable, we just wanna avoid having to chase stuff down after the fact, so. Um, okay, so that's the staff report, um, sidewalk, I, um. The fact that uh, open space has been involved and the fact that we've previously done a sidewalk, I'm gonna recommend we don't need a sidewalk on this one. Um, just looking for nodding heads from the board, is that reasonable? Um, okay, decision criteria. So, special permit criteria. Now, just to remind everyone, special permit shall be granted only if the planning board finds each of the following, that one, the development meets the purpose of an open space and landscape preservation. Uh, development as described and two ten dash one oh six. Two, the development standards contained in two ten, one twelve eighth, one through four have been met. Three, the common open space is designed in accordance with the standards set forth. Four, the common open space is designed in accordance with the standard set forth in, sorry, the previous one, the common open space is designed in accordance with the standard set forth in two ten dash one thirteen B. Four, the common open space is designed in accordance with the standard set forth in two ten dash one thirteen C. Five, the process should could be developed as a conventional subdivision under existing local, state and federal land use regulations. And six, the open space and landscape preservation development provides for an efficient use and delivery of municipal and other services and infrastructure. Um, so that is what we are evaluating against here. Um, so. Um, sorry, that's the first part. Let me just make sure I'm. And then we've also. Sorry, John, I'm just looking at this, we are decision criteria for the open space special permit and then the definitive subdivision plan. And I don't see. The decision criteria for the definitive subdivision plan. What's that?
Four point seven point two on the memo. The board must determine if the proposed amended definitive subdivision plan conforms to subdivision regulations. And if the requested waiver is appropriate.
Right, sorry, I was skipping over that because I didn't see the sub numbers, thank you. Alright, so the, the second consideration is the board must determine if the proposed amended, the definitive subdivision plan conforms to subdivision regulations. And if the requested waiver is appropriate, if the proposed subdivision meets the standards set forth in the subdivision regulations, it should issue a certificate of planning board action determining such. So, um, for folks of the planning board and folks at home, that is what we are evaluating this proposal against. Um, so we'll take a few moments and see if people have questions or comments related to those decision criteria. And we'll start with the planning board. To me, it seems relatively straightforward.
Yeah.
Um, I'd actually argue that it's an improvement against the O S L P D. Um, so. From my review, I, I think that it uh, is not a whole lot to discuss here, but. Questions, comments, or people feel otherwise?
No, I'm good.
Okay, um. Uh, waivers. So we have two waivers. One is for um. The curbing. Uh, and the second would be to waive the fees associated with this. Um. Let's go ahead and talk about the curbing. Uh, and I don't know, Craig or Mark, do you wanna explain to us? Why you're asking for the, the waiver on the curbing?
Yeah, I could give it. I'm gonna defer to Craig on this.
Yeah, I can give it a shot, I mean, it's, I guess it's, it's our personal preference that we prefer Cape Cod burn. We've got uh, three families living there, they seem, and talking to them, they, they seem to prefer a. Cape Cod burn, they've all drive nice cars and uh. We, we just see a lot of damage from vehicles from granite curbs, it's just a personal preference, I guess, uh. That's, that's sort of the gist of that, that's why it's not done yet, cuz we've been sort of flirting with this, switching to. Cape Cod burn for a while and uh, I'm not sure how it got missed last time in the heat of the battle, but. Um, here we are, I guess, uh, it's, it's up, up to the board, of course, so, that's all.
Okay, yeah, I, I, into your point, I know we, we uh, in, in most situations, we have been open to this waiver in the past. Um, and it, it's funny, I, I don't have a, I don't personally, I don't have a strong opinion, but I do have a slight preference for, for granite, just because I think it looks. Tight, nice, and I, I know the. Um, but I'm, I'm open to see what other folks on the, the, on the board think. Um, do, do people have a, a strong opinion of sticking with the. Standards and having uh, granite on the radius corners, or do people. Are people open to this waiver of uh, converting those to a, a Cape Cod burn?
I have one other thought through the chair, if you, if I could, ju- just that, the, the road is pretty narrow. I, I agree with you, granite curbs very stately looking, but um, maybe if the road was wider, that would be. Cool with us, but it's already like, you know, one car's coming up the road, the other sort of has to stop, if you will. Or they have to mount the curb, it's, it's not that extreme, but you, you know, you gotta pay attention a little closer with granite.
Yeah, and it is a, a dead end street that doesn't see a whole lot of traffic, so. Um, I'd still argue that, you know, plow damage on grass and that kind of thing too, but. It's just, just my personal opinion, uh, Jane, you were up first and then we'll go to Matthew.
Sure, I think we had a similar discussion um, on the um, state of, I mean, the. Development over um, is it Ravenwood off of?
Conley Farm.
Conley Farms, and um, because they are narrow roads and there's not much traffic, the curb. The ca- Cape Cod burn, we talked about is much more forgiving, especially when you're, you know, people are coming in there and. Landscaping vehicles and they wanna get up off the road and, or if you're having company, that is just, it gives people more flexibility.
Yeah, but the, but the granite is only required on the, on the, the sharp radius stuff.
Right.
The rest of it can still be Cape Cod. But I guess I'd argue that any place we have Cape Cod burns, the, the grass tends to get destroyed every winter as well. Um, but anyways.
It's, it, I think the granite, I think some people also find is unforgiving to. Cars and vehicles and tires and young drivers, things like that, so.
Yeah, Matthew?
Yeah, I was wondering if uh, anybody knew the rationale for granite being specified there, if it was the durability or if it was just. They specified some, we specified something to make sure something was specified that was adequate.
I don't think there was much discussion on it, um, to be honest with you, going back to the original approval, I think it's just a specification that made it in there and. Yeah, we're kind of bringing everyone's attention to it.
Sorry, Mark, I, I'm gonna ask that all, questions be directed through, through me, so, um, but I can go ahead and answer that and, and. Matthew, that's a, that's part of our subdivision um, bylaws. And the intent of it is to, you know, we also um, uh, particularly around radius corners. Um, those corners get cut, um, and uh, that can result in additional wear and tear and. People driving over them and whatnot, so it's just uh, it's part of the design standard that we have for our, all of our subdivisions. Other questions or comments?
Through the chair, through uh, I, I don't have a strong uh, preference or um. Here, I just wanna, it's, I'll go with the, whatever the majority of the board thinks is appropriate.
Okay, well, we'll find out when we uh, when we vote. Uh, any other questions or comments? Um, John, remind me, can. Does it make sense to just take a, a vote on the waiver now? I feel a little rusty, I haven't had one of these in a little while.
Yeah, you can vote on the waiver now and then in the uh, I believe the conditions reference it.
Okay.
Uh, no, conditions don't reference it, but yeah, you can take a vote on the board, on the uh, waivers now, actually they do, yeah.
Okay.
On the.
Um, and then really quickly, before we vote on that waiver, anybody from the public have a question or a comment on specifically on the, the granite curb? Of the waiver to the granite curve? Okay, we'll see none, then um, I will entertain a motion to grant a waiver for uh. Grant a waiver to the requirement for granite curbing um, along pavement edges with radius uh, less than one hundred feet.
Rob's a moved.
Second.
Alright, Rob with the motion, Matthew with the second, any further discussion? See none, uh, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob's a yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise? Elise, you there, did we lose you?
I think we lost her.
Okay, Matthew?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
No.
Parker?
No.
Uh, and Gary is a no as well, so that waiver does not carry.
So Gary, Elise, just sign back on if you wanna catch her.
Okay, Elise, I don't know where we dropped you, um, but we were voting on the waiver uh. To uh, remove the requirement for granite curbing along pavement edges with radius less than a hundred feet. And you were the one person that you haven't collected a vote from.
Sorry, um, I lost connection right before, uh, I vote no.
You vote no, okay.
Yes.
So that waiver does not uh, is not granted. Um, we'll move on to the second waiver, which is a, um, a waiver. To uh, not require the fees associated with this, um, John, what are the fees total on this?
Four hundred bucks.
Four hundred bucks. Um, any? Discussion or questions with regards to this waiver request? Okay, um, I, I think this one seems very reasonable to me in my opinion, but we'll go ahead and take a, a vote, um.
Sorry, Gary. That was for the definitive, there was also the, probably the uh, O S L P D, which is six hundred plus fifty for each lot above five. So there's eight lots, so six hundred plus hundred and fifty.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that, um. I will entertain a motion to uh, waive the application fees for the applicant um, on this. Uh, application?
They're moved.
Rob's second.
Any discussion?
What's the, what's the total? Through the chair?
John?
Uh, by my calculations, eleven fifty, but the nations can confirm that's what they paid.
Craig or Chris?
Alright. I, I'm not sure what we paid, I just remind you, we, we, most of the, the bulk of this, especially without the granite curbs. Is just donating land to the town, so um, I'm not sure what we paid.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Craig, Chris?
I've, it, it appears that we have three separate checks with this application. Uh, a one hundred for the application and then uh, a, a six hundred for, I think it's a cup, Form C. And then another notation for a four hundred dollar check for Form C, so the total that I'm looking at is eleven hundred, that appears that we've. Presented, eleven hundred even, I think John mentioned eleven fifty at, at, I see eleven hundred here.
Okay. Um, John, can we move forward without specifying the exact amount, or do we wanna align if it's eleven hundred or eleven fifty?
No, I think, I mean, it's fifty dollars difference, I think if you just say, if you wanna waive the entire fee, you just say you waive.
Okay.
Whatever administrative fees for the both applications.
So, just a friendly amendment to the motion, I'll entertain a motion to uh, waive the full fees associated with this application for the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, and assuming no further discussion, uh, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes, I vote yes.
Alright, Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic? Yes, Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Um, alright, so we've got. One waiver. Um. So our proposed findings. Uh, first with the O S L P D would be that the proposed open space and landscape preservation development conforms to provisions of Article. Twenty-seven to the all applicable criterion standards set forth in zoning bylaws, chapter two ten have been satisfied. And that the granting of special permit will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaws. Um, and then for the definitive subdivision, our proposed findings would be the proposed amendment of the definitive subdivision plan conforms to the subdivision regulations. Um, with the exception of one waiver uh, being uh, the fees associated with. The uh, application.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Uh, I don't think you need to put the fee waiver. Uh, I don't think you need to put the fee waiver into the findings, but you may want to. Make a statement about um the waiver for the granite curbs not being granted and. The plans should be revised to reflect that to then be in conformance with the subdivision regs. Does that make sense?
Yes, okay, so on the definitive subdivision plan, then the proposed findings would be that the proposed. Amendment to the fitness of the supply conforms to subdivision regulations with the exception of the fall with uh uh subdivision regulations. Uh, and then secondly. Oh, can I wordsmith this on the fly? Uh, the second condition would be that uh. Per uh, John, you know what, John, let's. I'm just gonna throw something out there and and we can wordsmith that.
You want me to try something?
Sure.
You can say the proposed amendment to the definitive subdivision plan conforms to the subdivision regulations. With the exception of the granite curb required along pavement edges with radius less than a hundred feet. Which the applicant will revise plans to reflect. The requirement of the subdivision regs or something to that extent.
Would would it be clearer if we just did a second finding?
Yeah.
Because the reality is, we're saying that the proposed amendment. Still conforms to the subdivision regulations in full, it's just that what the second finding would be that that the uh. That we considered uh. A waiver to relieve them of the granite curbing requirement, but have opted to. Stay with our uh subdivision standards.
I don't think you can make the first finding with the second finding. You can't make the finding that the proposed amendment conforms to the subdivision regs if it doesn't.
But it does, if we're keeping the granite curbing, then it does conform.
But the plans as proposed don't have the granite curbing.
Uh, if I may, the the plans were drawn with the granite curbing, that's why I'm asking for the waiver.
Okay. Okay, so that's if that's the case, I'd have to look at them, if that's the case. Then you can make the finding that the definitive subdivision plan conforms to subdivision regulations and then you can make a second finding saying that. The waiver was not approved in that the granite curbs shall be. Required as.
As. As showed, okay. All right, so on that second waiver, it will read uh.
Would it, would it make sense if we uh withdrew the request and then you don't have to mention it at all?
No.
It's already voted on.
Okay.
It's already voted on and then uh, I I, yeah, I think this is just. Me, uh, I'm I'm fresh off a thirteen hour flight home from Tokyo, so. Um, I'm operating at something less than a hundred percent right now, so I apologize. Um, all right, so the second finding would read uh. The, sorry, John, how did you start that off?
Yes, I'm writing it now, so uh, let's see, the waiver from section eight point two point two dot A of the subdivision regs. Was not granted, therefore. The. The subdivision uh, I'd have to think about it.
So the subdivision shall be built to the uh.
Subdivision standards and regulations.
And current drawings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, so the subdivision shall be constructed consistent with the subdivision regs.
Okay. Yes, Mark.
Well, I think we have to be careful here because there, if we go back now, remember this, this decision's been amended several times. And if we go back to the original decision, there were waivers granted at that time, so I think we have to be careful not to create inconsistency between. What we're doing now, what the board's doing now, and what was done some time ago, I. I I think we're okay with with a statement that the waiver's not being granted and the the the. The development will be built in accordance with the plans because in essence, those now are not changing.
So how about this, through the chair, the waiver from section eight point two point two A of the subdivision regs was not granted, therefore the subdivision. Uh, will conform to the subdivision regulations and previously issued decisions.
I like it, recommended finding as stated by principal planner. Okay, so I think we're good there, um. Conditions, this is always my favorite part because I need to read. All of these uh allowed, but it is not too long of a list here. Um, so for the special permit amendment, condition number one, that can be, and these are proposed conditions of which we will later take a vote on. Uh, the conditions included in prior decisions for this project. Uh, special permit certificate of planning board action, both dated October seventh, two thousand nineteen, amendment to the special permit and minutes certificate of planning board action. Both dated October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, remain in full force and effect unless modified by this decision. Two, no building permits shall be issued for this project, the exception of those building permits already issued prior to the conveyance of the open space to the town of Hopkinton. Or other entity that will control the open space. Uh, three, the applicant shall provide a revised concept plan showing the revised open space area to be conveyed to the town or otherwise preserved. Prior to the issuance of any new building permits that have not been issued as of the date of this decision. Four, the applicant shall provide a plan showing the revised area of open space resulting from this amendment process. It will be conveyed to the town or otherwise preserved, this plan shall be stamped by the licensed surveyor or civil engineer. Parson shall be labeled with the lot area in square feet and acres, this plan shall be submitted to the planning board prior to the issuance of any new building permits that have not been issued. As of the date of this decision. Um. Questions, additional conditions we should consider, uh, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, so I wanna bring the board up to date and hopefully um resolve any confusion going forward with respect to building permits. And the dedication of open space, so in conjunction with the meetings with the open space committee. We did um make a uh presentation to the select board in December. And we collectively signed an escrow agreement and I have in my possession an original deed from the applicant Ravenwood. To the town that's being held in escrow under that escrow agreement. And that deed describes the open space as this board um is poised to vote it tonight. In terms of the meets and bounds description. So I'm hoping for clarification as to that particular condition and the restriction on building permits that that standard. With respect to delivery has been met and it 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 is in conjunction also, if you recall back in the fall. There was a recommendation by the open space committee to to uh recommend to the board that that. One provision of the open space by law be relaxed to allow the issuance of building permits. So this request would be consist or clarification, if you will, would be consistent with that discussion.
It's not quite the way I remember it, but I know that that some allowances were made, I don't remember that being specifically the request of open space. Um, but uh. John, I know we we did work through a process where it doesn't need to be formally conveyed, but the. Remind me that the transaction needs to be started in some capacity, and we know that conveyance requires town meeting, which. We don't wanna hold up burdened building permits for town meeting, but can you remind me from town hall's perspective? What we should expect in terms of?
Yeah, Mark is, we're following along with what the plan is, what Mark laid out, um. This is just the standard language from the bylaw, so we're just including this, but. The uh agreement in escrow basically serves as the agreement to convey. And therefore, building permits can be issued now that it's been signed, however. The another, the other condition for the plans holds up the building permits until they provide us the plans.
Yes, I understand that, but so so I guess on the conveyance piece, though.
Nothing has changed in my mind and in Chuck's mind, the zoning enforcement officer on that, so the agreement in escrow. Serves as the conveyance.
Got it.
As long as it's approved at town meeting, but for now, it's it's as it's as if the open space has been conveyed. Because that agreement has been signed.
Mark, are you okay with that?
Yes, I just uh wanted to make sure that we, that no one had any further confusion on that, and I think we're all on the same page.
Okay. All right, um, oh, Chris?
Uh, Mister Chairman, so uh a a point of clarity, just perhaps just because I'm not clear. Updating the plan set, the existing plan set. I I don't take it as a new set of plans, aren't we making a supplement to the existing set? Given.
We we just need to make sure that the plan set that the town has on file are the final plans. So if you have a, I think from what John said earlier, if if there's one sheet that's changed, if you can. Give us an updated version of that one sheet, then that should suffice, we just need to make sure that we have a complete and accurate. Plan set before uh any additional building permits are issued. Understood, I think that's pretty straightforward, yeah?
Yes, I and and in essence, uh, Mister Chairman, I think the the one sheet, because the. Whisperway component is not changing at all, the one sheet that will show the change would be the sheet that shows the revision to the easement.
Okay, Chair, yes, John.
I just wanna be super clear, there's two plans that need to get submitted, the revised definitive plan showing the easement. But then also the special permit concept plan that has the new open space. So that's not, I don't believe that was a sheet of the plan set, I think that was a standalone sheet, so those, there's two different plans.
Okay, now do you want that to be inclusive of the adjoining open space in Valleywood? Or is it just contained within the with original Whisperway approval?
It should include, it should include that new corridor, because that is being done under the Whisperway subdivision.
Okay.
So that it should include that.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, either way, I mean, I I maybe if I'm missing something, tell me otherwise, but the electronic version's already done, it's. Printing them out and dropping them off at town hall.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on those? All right, and then the conditions for the subdivision plan. Uh, number one, the conditions included in prior decisions for this project, special pertinent certificate of planning board action, both dated October seventh, two thousand nineteen. Mentioned the special permit and minutes certificate of planning board action, both dated October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, remain in full force. And effects uh uh remained in full force and effect unless modified by this decision. Uh, two, the applicant shall provide a revised definitive plan showing the revised area of open space resulting from this amendment process. It will be conveyed to the town or otherwise preserved, this plan shall be stamped by licensed surveyor or civil engineer. This plan shall be submitted to the planning board prior to their issuance of any new building permits that have not been issued as of the date of this decision. Um, and then uh we did not grant the waiver, so condition number three is not required. Okay, so those are our conditions, um, before we move to a vote, are there any? Last comments either from the board or from the public? Okay, um. Then I will entertain a motion that the board approve the amendments to the special permit. Uh, with the conditions as previously allowed, read aloud by the chair. Um, and John, can I do these together?
You can, but you also probably wanna include the findings as well.
Ah, thank you, um, sorry, I'm gonna restate that, I will entertain a motion that the board accept and approve the findings as previously allowed. Um, for both the special permit amendments and the definitive subdivision amendments. Uh, as well as that the board approved the amendment to the special permit uh with the conditions as run allowed by the chair. And that the board approved the amendment to the definitive subdivision with the conditions as previously read allowed by the chair.
So moved.
Rob's second.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, any further discussion? All right, see none, uh, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gary is a yes, the motion carries, um, and uh lastly, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this hearing.
They're moved.
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well, so um. All right, thank you, uh, Chris, Craig and Mark, and um. We'll go ahead and get the paperwork going on this and you can drop off those updated drawings, should be hopefully pretty pretty painless on your end as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, thank you, have a good night.
All right. Um, let's go ahead and move to the MBTA housing.
Through the chair.
Yes.
There are two other items on the agenda that we may wanna do before we get to that hearing. One is to add the MBT communities article to town meeting warrant and then to with allow the withdrawal of twenty-eight lumber street. Unless you want to do those last.
I I was gonna, I I don't know if there's anybody on the line for either of those in particular, so I was gonna hold those to the end.
I didn't wanna forget them.
Got it. Um, well, let's go ahead and get to the the MBTA um housing uh. Um. Sorry, hearing, um, and I I think uh we had some really good discussion at the last meeting. Um, Zach has actually already gone back and met uh and made some uh minor modifications. Um, but what we'd like to do tonight is uh try to to wrap up our. Uh, both our our board feedback as well as any public feedback. Um, with the intent that Zach can then finalize their recommendation to the planning board. So um again, we're 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 not gonna vote on this tonight, uh, from a process perspective, it's a little cleaner for us to allow. Zach to go back and 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 review once more and and actually submit their final recommendations. Um, but certainly we still want to go ahead and um. Use this opportunity and hopefully if folks have had a chance to think and review and 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 explore and investigate a little bit further. Um, does that sound, sound okay? You can nod your heads, yes, um, if that makes sense. Um, okay, um, Sean, do you wanna go ahead and walk us through the modifications? That Zach made since last time we met?
Sure, there's not a ton, but they are relatively important in the grand scheme of the MBT communities. And I just got an email from Emily, who is our consultant, who um recommends we change some definitions. Uh, they're currently in our existing bylaw, but we could just add definitions to this section so that they pertain to that for. Multi-family dwelling or project and dwelling unit, uh, just to be consistent with chapter forty A. Um, but we didn't make those changes yet, cause I just got that email tonight, but um, I'll start at the beginning, uh, so. Uh, well, first one was to delete some of the definitions that were included in the model bylaw that are not used in our bylaw, so those have been struck. You can see those up here. And then we spoke about the. Uh, forty foot front yard setback in Upper Cedar Street District, Emily was a little concerned by that, but then, cause thirty feet is what the. The state is looking for at most, but she said that that is consistent with the area, the sites generally support that. So she doesn't think that's actually gonna be a concern, um, as long as we can, we can defend it with what we. So she doesn't think that's actually going to be a concern. Um, as long as we can, we can defend it with what we've already said. Uh, so we didn't change that. Um, the bicycle storage, it did not have a minimum. And she said that would be difficult to get through because that would essentially say that the developers have to make all of the bike parking covered. So Zach decided to do at least twenty-five percent. Of the bike parking to be covered and integrated into the uh the interior of the building. There was some clarification on, can you see my cursor?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. On open space A. Uh, we mixed Upper Cedar Street Sub District and Downtown together into one clause. And she thought it would be cleaner to just separate those because there's an open space requirement in Upper Cedar Street District, but not in the downtown. So we just separated those into two separate uh items. And then also for open space, we said that originally, open space cannot be used for components of sewage disposal systems. And the calculation of if uh thirty percent of the of the site is required for open space. And forty percent of this, uh, forty-five percent of the site for coverage, that's seventy-five percent of the site to fit in. Sewage disposal, uh, other infrastructure, parking driveways, and that would be really tough. So Zach decided to change it to say. Open space can't be used for this unless those areas have been designed and constructed to support viable passive recreational opportunities. Uh, so that could just be open space. People might be able to walk on it. It could just be views. Um, but that would allow for some more flexibility to develop the leaching fields and all that kind of stuff as open space in the future. And not not um take up too much of the site. Um. And I want to say that may be it. Yeah. So the other uh thing that we talked about was the WR pod district. Uh, the Water Resources Protection Overlay District. And that essentially puts a limit on impervious surfaces on sites of twenty-five hundred square feet, which would. Be very difficult to achieve in a multifamily development. However, looking into it a little bit more in some discussion, we believe that doesn't actually apply. Because um those types of developments are exempt. Uh, from the WR pod. And it all those types of developments, I should say, are exempt from the WR pod dash one sub district within the WR pod. So if you look at the WR pod map, it's there's like hatch and then there's not hatch. Anything that's hatched is the WR pod one, which is most of the town. Uh, and so we're pretty confident that that does not apply, so no changes were made for that. Otherwise, there would have been a separate section exempting. MBTA communities from that requirement. Or making that requirement uh subject to site plan approval under a planning board, not through the special permit through the ZBA. But we don't believe that actually applies. Um, so we've not moved forward with anything on that. Uh, and those are the changes so far, and we think it's in pretty good shape otherwise. Uh, and Emily has. Said that she thinks it's also in pretty good shape. Um, we are still waiting on final confirmation. For the, for section two fifty-eight. Right now, our inclusionary bylaw in our zoning allows for rounding up of the units. The state has said in the past that you can't do that. You have to round down, but now we think that they've changed their tune. And they will allow rounding up as long as it's townwide and not just for the. More uh MBTA communities. So we need to get final confirmation from the state on that, but we may. Strike most of two fifty-eight and just say it needs to comply with Article eleven, Inclusionary Development, period, uh, in the future. But Zach is going to meet one more time to really finalize all the comments from Emily. And uh provide a formal recommendation and proposal to the planning board. That addresses every other concern. It's going to be very, very similar to what's in front of you now. But like I said, we might have to address the inclusionary zoning and some of the definitions. Um, so, okay. Uh, I think it's going to be the only change, if any.
Thanks, John. And um one other quick update. Um, I did ask John to just run through the model. Um, for the downtown district for uh at least one particular parcel, just to get a sense as to what. MBTA housing would allow for versus what is allowable uh currently. Um, and I had just for, again, just as a property that people know, I had him run that analysis on the Hop Drug property. And um it it's worth noting that there is some variability in this because it, there's different ways to design it and setbacks and parking and and other other requirements. But based on the model that MBTA uses. Um, the, our current zoning with it being mixed use would allow for something uh. North in the model, it was, it was more than thirty units per acre. That's currently allowed today. Um, in the MBTA uh housing overlay, uh, it would be, and that would be. Residential only, so no commercial retail on the first floor, like what is allowable. Sorry. What's allowable now is mixed use. So if the first floor is commercial slash retail, they can do apartments above. And the total apartments could be somewhere north of thirty units per acre. Um, MBTA housing, it could be housing only. Um, but the maximum density they could build on that lot would be around uh twelve units per acre. So just, just keep that in mind as we look at this and and uh just, you know, worth noting that particularly in downtown. Um, as long as it's mixed use, we already allow um for pretty high density. So I hopefully that was a a useful comparison. Hopefully my explanation of it made sense, but um. You know, I think for me personally, I can't speak for the board, but for me personally, if we're going to build something like that downtown, I'd actually rather it be mixed use. Because I think that's just creates a a stronger um asset for the for the town and for downtown overall. Um, so um thanks, John, for the the update, the recap. Um, I'm gonna open it up to the planning board first. Uh, we'll take comments and questions, uh, and then we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. So, members of the board, um, questions or comments? Rob?
Uh, yeah, I guess through the chair, I I have a general just kind of procedurally. Like we talked last meeting a lot about the particular parcels, and I'm sure there's a lot. There's maybe things people want to talk about the particular parcels, but there's also particulars of like of the zoning requirements. And did you want us to talk about one thing? Like, I guess I'm I'm trying to get a sense. Should we? Kind of arrange our discussion to tackle one thing first and then go into the secondary thing or just? Any, talk about anything?
Um, well, I I think um, you know, Zach has gone through a pretty comprehensive process and has their. Current recommendations in front of us that are, call it ninety-five percent of the way there. So um, given where we are in the process, I I'd say. Uh, if you have, I think anything is is fair game. If you want to review and and, you know, if we start to see a theme emerging. Then that's feedback that we can give to Zach uh as they meet their final time. Yes, John?
So I will say Emily is uh planning on attending a planning board meeting, I think sometime in March. Um, once all this is finalized. So I'll just say if you have questions that deal with. If we changed it from this to this, would that still be in compliance? We might want to hold those until she's here because she's going to be better at answering that than me. But if it's, why did Zach do it this way? I could probably answer those or if Zach member is on board, but I just want to say that she will be present. So we can have her answer those kind of compliance questions if if they come up.
Okay.
Uh, I did have, like I I, so I I attended uh through the chair. I attended a lot of the Zach meetings uh or several. Then discussing this topic. And one thing, um, before talking about the parcels, I think that's probably what a lot of people. Um, are on their minds. The idea of parking came uh was something that came up and. I believe um, the way our language is that parking should be screened from site or. Uh, something to that effect. I'm trying to find it here in real time, the exact terminology. Um, I don't know, John, if you have it readily off the top of your head, but uh. I was looking at what other towns were kind of doing and they basically make it. Uh, may, from what I could gather, they made it so it was just definitively not viewable from any street location. As opposed to screened or it, the language other towns were using seemed more harsh in terms of, harsh is the wrong word, more. Definitive that parking for these type of projects wouldn't be visible from the roads.
I am scanning it quickly here as well, and I see definitions for structured parking.
Cause like if one thing um that would make, I think downtown kind of um, uh, especially in Isor. Is if you just had a. Significant parking in front of the of these struck of buildings. And so other towns were kind of trying to tackle that by saying no visible parking. Um, in the parcels from the street. And I think that's a good thing. Um. I don't know how to incorporate it here in this language because I haven't been in all the discussions of how, like how this, putting this whole bylaw together, but I think. Something along those lines makes sense.
Uh, yeah, I'm reading it here. Surface parking shall be located to the rear or side of the principal building. Parking shall not be located in the setback between the building and any lots adjacent to public right away. So that's surface parking. It's saying it needs to be in the back. Uh, integrated garages, the principal pedestrian entry into the building shall be more prominent in design and placement than the vehi- the vehicular entry in into the garage. Parking structures, buildings dedicated to structured parking on the same lot as one or more multifamily buildings or mixed use development shall be. Subordinate in design and placed to the multifamily or mixed use buildings on the lot. So surface parking needs to be in the back. Uh, integrated garages need to have a more prominent design and placement. Um, the pedestrian entry is needs to be more prominent than vehicle entry. Um, and uh parking structures need to be subordinate, so AKA smaller or less dominant than the. The main buildings.
So uh uh through the chair, my recommendation would be the uh in particular. Is to change, to add to this language that parking. Should not be visible from the street, should be screened or not re- uh easily viewable from. Uh, the street.
Put it at the rear of the lot is not sufficient?
Well, it's, it's not just the rear, it's the side too. Uh, what I, um. I think it's not, uh. From what I've seen, other towns are are have done this. Uh, I don't think it's unreal- realistic. Um, I just think we want to prevent uh what could be. A significant parking lot, street side.
Okay. Uh, John, you had a comment or reaction?
Um, so let's see, the sections two ten, two, two fifty-seven B four is screening for parking. Um, I can read that if you want. I don't know.
Uh, sorry, what was it? Two ten?
Two fifty-seven. B, so general development standards, site design, screening for parking. This says surface parking adjacent to a public sidewalk or residentially zoned land shall be screened by landscape buffer of sufficient width. To allow the healthy establishment of native trees, shrubs and or perennials, but no less than ten feet. The buffer may include a fence or wall of no more than six feet in height unless there is significant grade change between the parking and the sidewalk. I don't know if that addresses Rob's comment, um, but that might be a better place to put any changes. Cause that does deal specifically with screening for parking.
Rob?
Um. I don't know, I don't know the best place to to put this language. Uh, I. Um.
Uh, I I guess I'm. I I hear your concern and I I appreciate that because we don't want a big parking lot in the front. Um, or uh just, you know, take a, a lot and just make it a big ugly parking area.
Yeah, like historically.
But I also, I I feel like that's addressed here by saying that. Open parking needs to be to the back or the side. Uh, it does need to be screened from public sidewalk. Uh, or residentially zoned land. So I I guess I'm not quite sure. I'm trying to think of a situation that's that's not covered by what's in this language now. Or or I guess if you have a specific recommendation, recommended change that we can entertain that, I I just.
My recommendation in the, in this whatever o- overlay district, uh, whatever the parcels are, would be. Um, from the main street, parking. Should not be visible. Parking, parked cars should not be visible.
Okay. Um. Uh, thoughts from other members of the board on that? Michael, I see you have your hand raised, but let's go ahead and see if there's any, if we have any kind of consensus from the group here.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Robert, can you list any of the towns that we're doing similarly? And I'm sorry, I dropped off for a second. If you listed any, and I've just rejoined, but.
I didn't list, I didn't list any specific towns, but um, I did. Um, as much research I could of other towns and what they're doing, and I thought this was a good uh. Something I I saw other towns do that I I liked, so I brought it forward here.
Maybe, um, and again, I guess my concern is I, to me, that's pretty well covered here, but if there's better language. Cause I, I don't think we can just say that you can't see a parked car from the main street. Like, that's a little, it's a little harder to objectively assess.
It would take me through the chair. It would take me a little time to resurface that. Uh, like, I don't know if I could do it in real time here, resurface where I got that information. Um, but I can, uh, I definitely could get it offline for sure.
Okay, well, maybe before the the Zach meeting. I mean, I I'll just, I'll just say for what it's worth, my perspective, I I think the. And I'm. I I just. And I'm looking at the existing screening and so service parking adjacent to a public sidewalk or residentially zoned land shall be screened by a landscape buffer. With sufficient width to allow a healthy establishment of native trees, shrubs and or perennials, but no less than ten feet. Buffer may include a fence or wall of no more than six feet in height unless there is significant grade change between the parking and the sidewalk. Um, I'm wondering if maybe. Do we borrow any language from our solar bylaw? Cause I, I, to Rob's point, I know sometimes a. A buffer zone or something that allows for healthy establishment doesn't necessarily provide adequate screening. Um, so I'm, maybe there's something we can. Maybe there's some language that we can use from that.
Through through the chair, that's my, my thinking. I I think as we have a buffer zone of uh vegetation, it doesn't. Like that could be a rhododendron, it could be uh, I don't know, grass.
Yeah, no, I.
It's not necessarily, yeah, okay.
I I just, I also think that we can't, we can't completely hide them like, like they don't, like the cars don't exist either. Um, so you can have something really well screened and still, you know, it's like sometimes good fencing actually allows a little bit of. You know, visibility through and I and personally, I'd I'd rather have uh. You know, landscaping that that might allow a little peek through the, as opposed to having a, you know, a solid fence. Or something that that my opinion doesn't look as nice. So that's what I'm I'm cautious about the like, can't see a car at all. I'd I'd rather have some standards around the screening to make it aesthetically pleasing.
I agree with just having a a six or eight foot tall fence. That's not the best scenario either.
Okay.
Uh, so I will research to try to find, to try to resurface where I got this information. Uh, before the next Zach meeting and send uh, get this information to Zach.
Okay, that's, I think that's, that's fair. And I I think, I think the the point is heard and I, you know, I I agree. Let's, let's look at the the screening for parking. And make sure that we're effectively screening the parking, not just allowing for for future screening. Effectively screening the parking, not just allowing for for future screening. All right, um other questions, comment, I think, uh sorry, Michael, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just curious if somebody could speak to how um. Uh putting the overlay district in the center of town for MBTA housing would. Conflict with um the historical district that runs up against it.
Um it's a good question, I think we talked about that a little bit last, John, but um because. I believe the historic district. Or requirements override MBTA housing. But I might have not gotten my words right there, so do you want to just describe the interaction between? Historic districts and MBTA housing?
So uh MBTA, to my knowledge, does not address historic resources um. Historic provisions are in the general bylaw, this is a zoning bylaw amendment, so they. Kind of do their own thing, um I can, I can ask Emily and see if there's any guidance at the state level. Of how we're supposed to handle that, but to my, to my knowledge. Any development could be done. In any area and still have to deal with historic district changes. I I yeah, I don't I don't know if that would say the historic supersedes the zoning, because in reality, you could do. This type of development in a historic building, as long as you comply with all the historic requirements. It doesn't prevent you from doing this. And the state has prepared a a GIS shapefile that. Provides the the areas that are not developable under MBTA. And I don't believe it included any of the historic resources. So I I can get further guidance on that, but to my knowledge, there's, there is no guidance and they're kind of. Two separate things, just like they are for any other development.
Yeah, that makes sense, as long as they maintain, I guess, kind of the aesthetic um. You know, requirements, then they could develop inside a building like that, okay?
Okay. Thanks, Michael, good question. Uh anyone else on the board have any questions or comments?
Do we, do we want, uh through the chair, do we want to talk about the the map? Cause I have concern. On the. Opposite preserve, the three parcels on the other side, on the state park side of the preserve.
Carboni's extended.
Yes, I would uh. Myself, uh me personally, I would rather have other parcels in town. Than those three particular parcels. From research, from like, this is uh like I've looked at a lot of what other towns have done and. A lot of other towns um. Are trying to minimize uh minimize. Potential short term impact, what I mean by that is.
As are we.
Yes, and so. It's very common, or at least my experience, my from what I've read and see is towns propose. Areas that already have very dense housing, like the these three parcels. Is Carboni's Restaurant and two homeowners, from what I can tell. And in general, other towns are not proposing that type of land, they're proposing. Land where there might already be super dense housing, or there might already be. A large office building or for some reason, a lot of towns propose gas stations, I don't know exactly why. The but they propose the parcels that the gas uh gas stations resides on.
Like, like us.
Yep.
We have two gas stations in the mix.
But uh so these particular parcels um. In turn, in the, in the grand scheme of things. I think we could find. Uh we could designate an area like the Windsor uh apartments near four ninety five, that's already very dense housing. And make that. Our land, part of the land area that is. An MBTA com- community's land area, like realistically, on the other side in South Borough. There's gonna, uh South Borough is required to put a lot of land area in very close proximity. To this, the train station, because they have the transition inside of town. And. I don't know that we want to exacerbate a little mini microcosm um. There of a of very dense housing. Um that that would be my, that'd be my take, but um.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
Uh other members of the board, before I weigh in here, do other members of the board have thoughts on Rob's? Suggestion?
Through the chair, that was a question, if not, you know, very thoughtful. Point because we know the existing, you know, infrastructure that the state offers insofar as like public transport, if there were to have. I don't want to. Butcher Rob's roots too much, but like a little mini microcosm, if you will, uh in that area. What would be like the future impact? And I personally haven't looked at South Borough's, you know, plans or. You know, how and what, you know, they're proposing and, you know, if, for example, we did have a fifty years down the line. What would be the infrastructure requirements and, you know, what could be the potential, you know, ecological impacts to. Uh you know, our beautiful, you know, state park that is, you know, just adjacent to the water there with tons of travel, you know, lots of cars, I think it's something considering, a really interesting point. Robert, appreciate appreciate you bringing that up.
Other thoughts?
So uh through the chair, I I was just curious, like, um so I wasn't so much concerned about the ones that were out um near the train station, I was more concerned about. The center of town, um.
Um, sorry, Michael, let's let's go ahead and finish up. The conversation or the ones done by the train station first, and then we'll go to downtown, if that's okay?
Well, yeah, I I mean, it kind of relates to that, I I was curious, um. You know, I think initially when they did the presentation, we saw like, you know, a bunch of different sites and they narrowed it down to these two. Maybe like a little, you know, clarity on what kind of drove them to this, um and it would be helpful too.
Yeah, um I guess I can attempt to do that, um. But, you know, first and foremost, the 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 intent here, number one, is to build housing that's close to train stations. And there's not a whole lot of. Buildable or undeveloped land in Hopkinton, um but um I think that was objective number one. And if you recall, originally, it was, you know, the fifty acres had to be within a half mile radius. Um I think uh these lots were chosen um. Because of their proximity to the train station, um and to the comments earlier, certainly. There's not a lot of risk in the short or medium term to these being developed, um one of them is already built out, um. The other one um. In its current, in the in the current uh. Mode, it 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 wouldn't support very many houses, um there's a fair amount of wetland back there and without. Um sewer or in particular sewer, but without sewer and water. There's currently, there there's not a whole lot of options to to build anything, um. You know, of of significant units uh on on those parcels, so. I think in the in the, you know, the Zach looked at it and said that these two lots in Cedar Street in particular are are. Conform to the spirit of the MBTA housing bylaws, um and uh at some point in the future, they. Could be. Developed in some capacity, um and 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 candidly, the Carboni's lot, certainly somebody could go in and do something there there now, but. Um, you know, the the. The the full buildout or the, you know, uh something significant would be um. Very unlikely for this foreseeable, for the 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 foreseeable term. Um and then downtown, uh if we look at those two parcels, then you look at what other places could we consider? And, you know, I think it's worth comparing to Windsor as an example. Um, you know, we could certainly do an MBTA overlay over Windsor. But I think on behalf of Zach, um there are two concerns with that, number one. Um that that is a, you know, holistically, if we're going to put dense housing, we'd rather put it downtown because. Um, you know, that's that's uh our densest zoning and certainly um apartments and whatnot downtown. Support local businesses, which is something that we hear people want. You know, whereas Windsor building more, you know, or or accommodating more apartment complexes out at a freeway interchange. You know, maybe is is a little less desirable, but um, you know, I I think a lot of it had to do with trying to make sure that we were. Conforming to the intent of the the bylaw, so that's kind of my quick overview, and I I don't know. Elise is on Zach, um John, you've certainly been a part of the meetings, um. And I don't know if we have anybody else from Zach here, but if you have other comments or thoughts to share on on why these parcels. Um feel free to to jump in.
Through the chat, the this is Vic, yeah. So you just covered everything, why it was a has part, I was part of the Jack and.
Thank you, Vic, I apologize, thank you.
No, so. The discussion was just to, uh I mean, based on the the law. We have decided that the close proximity, as you rightly identified, and uh. But Rob's concern, where he's talking about, uh how would this be down the lane, what would be the impact? Again, those were also a discussion which were part of the Zach when we had this discussion. We are allocating the land, but we are not trying to develop right away, and even to develop that, there's a lot of uh what we call is that uh um. Rules and regulation which needs to be taken care into forward, uh which John can add to that when the discussion, so. The idea behind uh these lots were just meeting the requirements of the state and also making sure that we safeguard the town. Uh that was the balance where we started taking consideration into these lots.
All right, thanks, Vic. Michael, does that answer your question, or are you looking for more?
No, 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 that's good stuff, um and like I said, you know, I. I think any of us could look at the the map and be like, you know, why not here, why not there, right? Yeah, the one in particular, maybe uh uh this is the last thing I want to mention. Did anybody ever look at, um I guess that like parcel of land right near where the um. Metro West Regional Transit Authority stop is near Golden Pond, was that ever considered or?
Yes, John?
I'm trying to think of where you, I had, uh interesting, I I spoke to the director of the Metro West Regional Transit Authority today about the bus route. Trying to think of where you're talking about, because we talked about the stop that's at Legacy.
Oh, to me, I always see them stop.
Around here, there's one downtown, there's one at Hayward and South. And then there's one at Price Chopper. I don't think we mentioned one near Golden Pond, so I'm not familiar with that one.
Okay, yeah, no, I I just thought of that, um when I see them stop there all the time, but.
Uh I mean, maybe they do, and it could be a flag down stop. It wasn't considered, uh to my knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, there's a con to that too, right? There there's like a massive thing of um. Land that's not built there already, so conceivably. That could be, you know, built on faster than downtown, but yeah.
Are you talking about very acres?
Yeah, this is all preserved land, are you talking about on the north side of Main Street or south side?
Uh the uh side where your cursor is.
Uh so that's that's.
Okay.
And one other point I'd make too is that with the Cedar Street properties is, you know, I. And again, I'm speculating here, but I I would. Hypothesize that the traffic impact to Hopkinton would be relatively low from anything being built out there as well. Um they're likely to go the other directions. Unless they were coming into our beautiful downtown.
Through the chair, I guess um. Like, there's an, there's an article just on the internet about like South Borough's proposed uh parcels and the. Where they are in proximity to these, is it, is it worthwhile to show these during the this meeting or? I I I guess. Um, I feel like, I feel like education is better here.
Yeah, I, to to me, it doesn't sway my opinion or decision, I I I like the idea of having denser housing near train stations. That's just, just my personal opinion. Um I think what I'd recommend here is. You know, we can kind of do a a little straw poll. Um among the board and, you know, see if this is something that we want Zach to go back and reconsider. And if the majority of the board feels like they should, then um, you know, we can provide that that feedback to them. But I, you know, yeah, I think I I would, but I. I appreciate the the lengthy process they've gone through, I I think that they've. Considered a lot of different things here and and, you know, and I I realize that that maybe some people have. More sway towards complying with the state mandate than 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 others do, but I, you know, I I just. I I personally would agree that we have a housing shortage, and if I'm going to put housing someplace, I think it makes sense to put it near train stations. So maybe we'll just um quickly go around, oh, go ahead, John.
Uh just kind of a procedural thing, I don't know at this point if it's worth sending anything back to Zach. It may just make more sense for the board itself to make the discussion and the changes. If any are proposed, because Zach, if you send it back to Zach and then Zach does all their work and then sends it back to the plan.
Okay. Okay. So I'm gonna, I I think. Uh you guys probably, I think you know where Rob's position is, you know where my position is, um. Maybe we'll just quickly go around the other board members and see if people have a perspective on this and and uh to John's point, if we. If we want to make a change to it, then um we can get into that discussion um and go from there. So maybe um. Uh Jane, maybe we'll, we'll start with with you.
Um sure, I like um Zach's presentation, and I was struck with the thought that they put up so much thought into it. And one of their main concerns was to stay within the spirit of the of the proposed um law. And I think I agree with you, Gary, that staying within walking distance of a train station. And the secondary, as you mentioned before, there's very little likelihood that that will be, that sewer and water will event, you know, eventually go down that area. So I like it being there.
Okay, Elise?
I like um. I like Zach's proposed areas now. I think they put a lot of thought into minimizing um. Impact in the short term. And as someone who lives downtown, I live like right near where the A Street. Zoning area would end, um and I think. That that. Is a good area for more dense housing, because it's right downtown, um. I don't think it's realistic, um. I I mean, I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon, because they, if someone was going to build an apartment building there, they'd have to buy a whole lot of houses. And in this market, it just doesn't seem like financially. Lucrative, but I think it is a good area for the plan.
Okay, thanks, Elise, um Matthew?
I don't have much to add, I agree with everything that's been said, uh I think. These two spots uh make reasonable sense, and Zach's put a lot of effort into this, uh having spots next to the train station. As well as uh. Just having a walkable downtown would be ideal, the only thing uh really missing is a a walkable grocery store in that area.
But yeah. I hear you on that. Uh, Michael?
Yep, no, I I like the one out by um the train station, I think that's, you know, great, it makes sense. It's in the spirit of the law. Um, I was more concerned about the downtown one, just because, you know, I know there's incentives to, you know, if you're going to redevelop, have mixed use. I just want to make sure that, you know. We maintain like a a downtown, you know, with businesses, right? Not that it's just like, you know, wall to wall apartment. Buildings there, that was my concern, essentially. Apartment buildings there. That was my concern essentially.
Uh, Vic.
No, nothing. I mean, I'm good.
Okay. Parker.
I'd say my concern is legal and political, like if, you know, states, if 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 cities and towns continue to. You know, not work with and what the spirit of the law is and that would the, you know, state try and. You know, enact regulations that are far more. Uh, you T P, I guess, for lack of a better term. And I feel though that like Hopkinton is taking a step to address in the spirit of it. That'd be uh, actual intent of what three A is trying to accomplish. And so, um, and. To Gary kind of. Uh, helps alleviates some of my concerns about, you know, the traffic uh. Observing like the closest on ramp would probably be in South Row with Route Nine, so it'd probably mitigate traffic in Hopkinton. Um. So I think we should move forward with the plan.
Alright, um. So I think we've got a reasonable consensus there. Um, I did say I was gonna open it up to the public. I probably should have done this first, but um, are there any members of the? Public that would like to? Ask a question or make a comment about this? And John, do you mind going to the? Participant screen, just so I can see it.
I saw someone by the name of Martha who had her hand up. Yes, Martha Lanning is my name. Okay.
Hi Martha, you wanna? Give us your address as well, and then you can go ahead and ask a question or make a comment.
Pleasure, yes. First of all, I'm Martha Lanning, L A N N I N G. Apologies for not writing the full name on the screen. I live at sixteen Forest Lane at the Preserve. And I own a condo which is right near the. Rear entry of the Preserve, for those of you who may be familiar with it. And I would like to remind you of. The fact that the Preserve has private water. On a site that is. Cordoned off to some degree from the rest of the property. I'd like to cite from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Document revised August seventeen twenty twenty-three. Compliance guidelines for multifamily zoning districts under section three, et cetera, et cetera. We think that possibly, if you have not already walked the property of the Preserve. That you might not be aware that we have completely private water. And that the state of Massachusetts does. State that privately owned land on which development is prohibited to protect. Private water supplies. Are protected areas and ineligible for development. So I don't know if you were aware of the Preserve having private. Rights of way and private water, but this is. In state language and it calls it sensitive land means that. Meaning that developable, developable land. Uh. That has private water on it should not be used for development. So if you're not aware of that, I wanted to make you. Uh, aware that we do have private land on the Preserve. And secondly, with regard to the very interesting discussion of parking and. So on the. Immediate adjacency of the Hopkinton State Park to the land at the Preserve means that. Up and down Cedar Street and Cedar Street extension leading to overlook. All summer long has literally hundreds of cars lined up. Standing still, waiting to get into the park. And just recently, they've allowed. Park payment for entry to be done at a variety of sites within the park rather than at entry gate. To alleviate this problem, but there is a huge lineup of cars every day in the summer. So much so that a detail of Hopkinton Police has traditionally been assigned. Uh, to the area at the entrance of the park, which is. Across the street from the entrance to the Preserve. Thank you. Those are the two points I wanted to make, and I very much appreciate being able to speak. So thank you for recognizing me.
Alright, thanks Martha, and I can tell you um. Uh, yes, we are aware of the private water supply and the the private um, right of way. And uh, we haven't specifically talked about the parking, but. Um, certainly on on weekends, I've, I've, I've seen it. Um, and I'm I'm guessing others have as well. I I'm not. Um, so I appreciate you uh, raising those, raising those points. Um, Mr. Wieland, Wieland or Wayland?
Wieland, Wieland's correct. Yes, yes.
If you could just start with your, well, you already said your name, but your your address as well.
Yeah, I'm I'm at thirteen Forest Lane. Uh, I'm in the Preserve as well. And I'm also on the board. Um, we we uh, we spoke a little bit at the last meeting. And we had our attorney also present. Um, my concern, my my look, my biggest concern is, and I don't know how many. Parcels that you looked at throughout town that already had people living. On the, on, on those parcels. But um, we're very concerned here, and I know I've been assured that. Nothing happens unless the Preserve decides to sell. The way the law is written right now. My concern is, what if the law is rewritten? Uh, two or three years down the road, because the state says, look, this isn't working, you know, all these these parcels are sitting here and we can't get to them. Um, that's a concern of mine and I. I can tell you that everybody here at the Preserve is very concerned about that.
Yeah, I I think um. I I hear where you're coming from. It's hard to know what what might come down the road, but I'd, I'd say that could happen, number one, to any parcel. Number two, that could happen irregardless of whether this is part of an M B T A overlay. Um, to the points made earlier, if they're not seeing compliance with it, there's a lot of action they could take and they could force something else. So. The, my initial reaction is I'm not quite sure. The zoning this has any. And I I, you know, I I think it would be highly speculative to to think that that would somehow put you at. Increased, at a substantially increased risk of something being out of your control and. You know, in general, our property laws in the United States are are pretty strong. It's it's hard to forcibly. Take land from from people. Um, you know, certainly eminent domain, it 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 can be done. Um, but that is uh, an extraordinarily complex process that um, Massachusetts as a state. Um, generally tries to overweight as much as possible. John. John has a more official answer than I just.
Uh, not not necessarily an official answer, but I think I think you nailed it on the head, Gary. I just wanted to kind of add a little bit more to it. Um. What I'm gonna say has not been said by anyone from the state. It's just planning professionals that I have talked to in my professional life. Um, the theory is if M B T A communities doesn't work out as planned, some, and again. I have not heard this from anyone with any authority to do this. The theory would be, if the state really wants to change the zoning, they would just remove. Any zoning restrictions at the state level in a half mile buffer of the train station. Just basically forego local zoning. I'm not saying the state will do that. If this zoning. To your point, doesn't work, that would be the logical next step is for the state to take it into its own hands. That being said, that even if that happens, they would still only be changing the zoning. And until you sell your property. Nothing would be done that you didn't want to be done. The state, I can guarantee you, is not going to do eminent domain in Hopkinton. Before they do eminent domain in Newton, Lexington, Arlington, all those other closer. Uh, mu- much more expensive and and transit filled communities than Hopkinton. Uh, if anything, they would just. Take the zoning into their own hands, which again, I have not heard that from the state in any capacity, just planners talking. Um, but yeah, I I just don't see any way of. Forcing development in areas aside from through changing the zoning. Which would then still put your development rights in your hands and no one else's. So I just want to add that on. Yeah.
Mr. Wieland, sounds like you have a follow up?
Yeah, I do. I I have a question um, to everything you just said. Um, are are there? Um, you've, I I remember from the last session, you're very uh, thorough. Talking about other parcels in town and and you went through the whole process. We looked at this, we looked at that. And, you know, you looked at industrial sites, commercial sites, but you didn't want to use this or, or for whatever reasons. Um, how many sites besides Preserve have, are populated now? I mean, do you? Wouldn't wouldn't it just make sense to take sites that where human beings aren't living?
Well, uh, that that would, so it's the two things. Um. One, that would likely increase the the likelihood of. Something being developed or built in the short term, which we're, we're trying to 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 balance.
Yep.
Um. So I, you know, that that would be the 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 primary reason to to not do that. Um, and then secondly, again, I think the spirit of this is. We're gonna do this anywhere. It's trying to do it near transit hubs, which the Preserve is is near a transit hub. So I I think. You know, identifying a site that wasn't already built out. Um, that is also not near the train station. Um, just kind of goes against our our two. Primary considerations that we're trying to achieve here, which is, which is operate within the spirit of the law and. Uh, select sites that that um, have access to public transit.
But you did say that um, Hopkinton doesn't have to be uh, a half a mile from the train station, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So so you you're not, you 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 just decided that you want to be down near the train station.
I I think that makes good sense. If you're gonna build, if you're gonna, if you're gonna zone for. Dense or housing, I think next to a train station is a good place to do it. Then again, I I I think the reality of it is, is that. Uh, again, as John said, this is completely within control of the ownership of the Preserve. Um, if there was something that was so attractive to be built there, um, and the board. Uh, and the 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 board is the property owner was supportive of it, the, it would likely be. Uh, financially beneficial for you to to do so. So, uh, you know, again, I I think that the 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 choice will always remain. With your ownership. So I I don't really. Uh, you know, I I don't, I don't see there there a whole, I don't see there being a whole lot of risk. For uh, for the the residents of of the Preserve.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you learned last time as well, at last meeting, that every resident at the Preserve has a veto. On if new condos or anything new can be built on the property. So. Uh, Mr. Wieland would have a a veto to anything being built. And, you know, further. Uh, unless like you stated, or or John stated, the state comes in with, you know, bigger teeth, our intention in the town to try and. Uh, Mr. Wieland be compliant with this regulation. I understand you might feel targeted, but. The the truth is, like, this is the best compromise for you not to see your property taxes increase if we build on a parcel that. Then, you know, welcomes, you know, new population, which means beating new schools, which means new referendums, the. So we're trying to stay compliant or without. You know, having the 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 growth of any post this town. You know, don't necessarily want to see pushed out on their throat by the state. And we're we're trying to do this, sir, to be compliant with the state. We're really sorry that. You you you're a town, you're a community, or you're you're uh, the subdivision feels targeted, but. That's not the intention with this board's trying to do. We're simply trying to stay in compliance with the state.
Yeah. It's a good point on the total risk of other properties and tax base. And and again, to me, the only way this happens is if someone came in and offered. The Preserve so much money, that a hundred percent of the residents said, yes, we'll take that. Um. Which. You know, if that, I mean, the reality is, to me, with this zoning change, I again, this is speculative on my part, but I'd argue that the value of. The 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 potential value of your land actually likely goes, goes up, if anything.
This um, this is gonna be voted on in the town meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. John.
I just want to reiterate from my, from the last meeting. I encourage any resident. Come talk to me, ask me tons of questions, sit in my office for an hour and, you know, talk my ear off. I I am happy to do that. I am happy to. Answer any questions you may have, go through any scenario, just kind of educate and inform you. Please feel free to use me as that resource. I am happy to do it. And I encourage you, give me a phone call, set up a time. Anyone that wants to come talk to me, please do.
Alright, thanks, John. Um. Alright, so I I think um, it looks like we've got comments from uh, the board, from the public. Um, sounds like the the one guidance that we have for Zach would be to see if there's a way to strengthen the. The screening for parking, which uh, appreciate Rob bringing that up. Um, and then um. I think that we're probably ready to um, continue this hearing. Um, John, you recommended February fifth? Or you want to push that back one, push it back one more meeting?
Uh, so it's up to the board if you want to continue taking public comment. Um, I don't think it's a bad idea to continue to February fifth. And open up for public comment, even if there is no public comment, just to give anybody an opportunity to speak. Um. Otherwise, we could continue to February twenty-sixth or March fourth. Uh, like I said, I anticipate Emily is gonna participate in the planning board hearing. Uh, sometime in March, either either March fourth or March eighteenth. So, um. We can try and schedule that, but I I I would say I would recommend continue to February fifth and just keeping it open to receive comment if if any are offered.
Okay, but do you, are, is your guidance that you recommend we wait to to vote on this? Until Emily is able to join our meeting?
Yes.
May I ask a quick question, please?
Uh, sure, Martha.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Based on the foregoing discussion, it's my understanding that even though the language in the state document. Calls land such as the Preserve ineligible for development. That the town of Hopkinton would still present it at as one of the options for developable land? Is that, do I understand that correctly? That you would continue to? Keep the Preserve as one of your proposed properties?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So, can I just clarify that as well?
Sure.
So the state, I don't know if you're at the previous uh, Plamour meeting, but we we.
I was.
A little bit. The state has prepared a G I S shape file with developable land and non-developable land. And so we have followed that. And so the state has not designated that land as non-developable under their criteria. So I understand that uh, water area. For private wells is not developable, but if the entire site were to be developed, that would not be water. Areas for that new development. I believe the the preserved land would be. So that the Preserve wouldn't be able to put development on that area, because that's where your water is from. But if it was a new development with a different area for water, that would not be the same thing.
If you please, is it clear to your understanding that the state is aware that the Preserve? Parcel does have private water?
I can't speak for the state. I don't know. They have a pretty robust set of shape files.
Uh, I guess I'd say this, um, they they know that. Public water supply doesn't go there. So, the water's coming from somewhere. So I'm assuming they are aware that it's coming from. Private water supply.
Boo, Chair.
Yes, John.
And uh, Martha, I'm happy to sit down with you and we can, I can reach out to the state and ask them. Can reach out to our our consultant and ask them, uh, and just, you know, get more information on this and and share it with you. Um. Happy to have that discussion. Happy to sit down with you at any point.
Would you be able simply to put that question forward? Um. That would be lovely if you would do that. I think everyone at the Preserve would greatly appreciate it. Is that possible?
I will ask our um, consultant that question. She's pretty well versed in all of this. Uh, and I will ask her and see what she says.
Thank you. This has been, the the water situation at the Preserve has been a very problematic issue all along. And we consider it a major issue in this discussion. So it would be. Very helpful to us in our understanding of the M B T A communities proposal, if you would be able to put forward that question. Thank you.
So maybe for Martha and Eric, I I just want to make sure I understand the kind of. like the crux of your concerns here. And I, I just want to make sure that I understand, is it, is it, is it a concern that, that someone's gonna come in and and, and, I, I mean, uh, to me, the only way this happens is if they buy your land from you and then tear it down and build something new. But I, 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 I don't know, I, I, maybe I'm not quite following what your concerns are.
If, if they did, um, if the, if, 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 if it came to pass that uh, that, the, the, um, that we actually sold um, and, and somebody came, a developer came in, they would knock all these buildings down, obviously. Um, all, the, the preserve would not exist any longer and they would develop it. Um, I, quite frankly, I think it would be uh, um, very difficult for them to do it, but I, I don't know, I'm not a builder. Uh, but my concern is, and, and uh, not, not to get into politics, but I don't trust Big Brother. They, they're, they're already forcing the town of Hopkinton to, to, to do this. You, 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 the town needs to do it to get highway money. And I just don't trust the state. I, I just don't. I don't, I could see five years down the road, they rewrite the laws and, and, and something else happens. So I, I just, it worries me.
Okay. Hey, Eric, I, I appreciate you sharing that with us. Uh, it, it, like I said, it just kind of helps us. Helps me put things in, in perspective.
Yeah.
Um, cause I, I, to your point, that's, that's not something that we're gonna be able to address through this board.
No, I know.
You know, and, and, and I get that, my perspective, that risk is there no matter what we include here. Um, and whether we include your parcel or not, that risk is always there. That's just, just my take, but I appreciate you sharing that.
I agree.
Martha, I, I know you, you've been, appreciate your engagement thus far. Any, any particular concerns or fears that, that you have on this?
Thank you for asking. I do appreciate it. All of us who live at the preserve really appreciate the beauty of the property. It's very pretty. Again, we invite you to come and take a walk through it if you would like to. I know Eric did invite you to do that at the last meeting on January 8. The land is somewhat fragile. Much of it is landfill for sewage, piping and so forth, and it's also highly wooded, as I'm sure you know. So we're concerned about the preservation of the beauty of the land. And we believe that if there were to be huge development immediately across the street at the Carboni Restaurant property, for example, that that would degrade the area with trucks, contractors coming and going, noise, you know what construction is like. And also it would disrupt further the traffic situation at the entry to Hopkinton State Park, which therefore would automatically seek a detour through the property of the preserve, which has happened every summer. So I could go on, but those are some of the concerns. We, we want to keep the preserve in its state of beauty as it is at present. And again, we invite you to come and take a walk through it and we can show you some areas that are quite unique and lovely, where kids have campfires and so forth. And actually where the water well and all of the accoutrements for the well are located.
Okay, um, so you know, maybe I, I appreciate your offering, um, and uh, you know, I'm certainly not opposed to it. If people are interested in, in going for a walk and, and seeing the property, um, I appreciate the, the offer, um. Do other members of the planning board have an interest in, in walking it?
I would, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So, so maybe we, maybe we, we, we set something up. Um, I, I know for me, I feel like I've ridden my bicycle past it enough. I've never been through it, but between the, the Cedar Street extension, the back entrance and the main entrance, um, I know there's more to it, but um, I feel like I have a good sense of what it is, but um, we typically do site walks on Saturday mornings. Um, but um, would someone, you know, I, maybe Eric, you as a board member, would, would that be something you would be willing to to walk any interested parties around the site? Hope you're muted. Now you're good. Now we can hear. Oh.
Sorry.
Now we got you.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, that would be great. Um, Saturday mornings are good. I am not here on Saturday mornings because I teach skiing at Wachusett part-time. But uh, I, you know, um, in March, um, probably, or we can get another board member to meet, meet meet whoever wants to come here on a Saturday morning. We have five board, board members, so.
Okay. So, so let's do this then. Um, I, I'm gonna um, if we'll, we'll go ahead and, and continue this hearing um, to February 5th. In the meantime, if you could um, check and see if there's another board member that could do that. And then at the February 5th meeting, we'll go ahead and schedule that.
Okay, great.
And then, uh, and then that way, is it, 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 it is open to the public as well? So, um, I don't anticipate a a ton of people showing up, but um, we'd wanna, we wanna have that discussion about when it is and where to park and whatnot, uh, in a public meeting. So um, if you can follow up with us and, and you could even um, reach out specifically to John and, you know, if you don't wanna um, attend the meeting, or if you can't attend the meeting, then, then we can just take that information and, and go from there.
I, I've, uh, John and I, I've, I've traded emails with John, so I, I can do that.
All right. So um, I guess on that, um, I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to February 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
And assuming no further discussion on that. Uh, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. So um, appreciate the engagement. Um, and uh, we'll probably try to keep that reasonably short on February 5th unless there's uh, a lot of new questions or issues that'll come up, but um, good discussion. Appreciate, appreciate everyone's um, contribution there. And thanks to, to Eric and Martha for, for your time tonight as well. It's, it's important to us that we hear from you and we wanna make sure that we incorporate as much public input as we can at this point in the process. So thank you both.
Sincere thanks back to you and to everyone's discussion. It was very illuminating.
Okay. Um, all right. The last public hearing we have is uh, 28 Lumber Street. Um, and on this one, we have a request. John, do you want to just give us a quick update?
So this one has been uh, tenured on the planning board agenda for over a year now. Um, and I think they came to like the first hearing, introduced it, and then said, we have some stuff we need to work out with CONCOM. Still have not finished the CONCOM process. So I asked the applicant uh, to withdraw, given that it's been a year. Um, and he agreed. So he has requested a withdrawal uh, without prejudice, which is the standard process so that there's no, no impact should they want to reapply in the near future, uh, they are allowed to. And so the board just needs to allow that and then to close the hearing.
So on that note, I will entertain a motion to uh, accept withdrawal without prejudice on uh, the proposal for 28 Lumber Street.
So moved.
Rob, second.
All right. Assuming no further discussion. Rob, how do you vote?
Rob, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Uh, and so I'll also entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And assuming no further discussion, uh, Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Um, two more things. Um, the first would be uh, uh, first would be, let me just check the notes here really quickly. Uh, hope there is no additional detail, but um, so the, the last administrator, I guess two more administrative items. The first is whether we want to add MBTA communities article to the annual town meeting warrant. So this is literally just a placeholder so that uh, um, we've got a spot reserved in the uh, annual town meeting warrant. Um, I don't think we need a whole lot of discussion here, but any questions uh, before we entertain a motion? All right, then I will entertain a motion to uh, add an article to annual town meeting. I guess I, am I, are, are we, is the motion to recommend adding the article? Or do we actually have the authority to add the article, John?
You have the authority to add the articles.
Okay. Well, I feel empowered.
The motion, Gary, there's a suggestion motion in the memo.
Oh, there is? There it is. All right. Thank you. Sorry. That's what I was looking for. I must have scrolled over it. Uh, all right. I want to entertain a motion that the planning board submit the MBTA community zoning bylaws and zoning map amendment to be included on the 2024 annual town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
And assuming no further discussion. Rob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gary is a yes. Jane, did I get you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That motion carries. Uh, and then the last is uh, we have uh, two sets of meeting minutes. Um, so any questions or comments on those minutes? Matthew?
Uh, one on each. Uh, on the December minutes, um, just for consistency. Uh, my name's written Matt in one location, but Matthew everywhere else. I just asked that it be standardized on Matthew. Um, and on the second, the January ones, is it right that John uh, made a motion for one of them? That seems like it might be wrong.
Good catch. Um, I'm pulling them up right now. We'll see who's fastest. I'm betting John is gonna be faster than I am.
Did you say it was on the 8th or on the uh, December 1?
Uh, it has hue on the 8th, January 8th.
What page was it on? Matthew, do you remember?
It's the very first motion, if I recall. Uh, planning board made a motion to endorse an A and R, made motion, John Gelsic.
Yep.
Um, these got posted at 2:00 PM, so I didn't get a chance to go back and figure out what actually happened.
We can correct that.
Can we, um, John, can we approve it? With that pending correction?
Yes.
Even though we don't know who actually made the motion?
Unless the board is very adamant about um, a certain person, we'll just watch the video and put whoever it was.
All right. So then um, Matthew, I, I appreciate you going through that. Um, good catches. Uh, I will entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes for uh, January 8th, 2024 and uh, December 4th, 2023, um, with two changes. The first is to change all references uh, to Matthew Runka, to actually spell out Matthew. And the second is to update the first motion from January 8th um, to the correct uh, person based on the video.
So moved.
Second.
Right. Assuming no further discussion. Uh, Rob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Uh, and last but not least, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right. So with Matthew with the motion and Vic with the second, uh, assuming no discussion. Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Uh, Matthew, uh, sorry, Matthew?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. So uh, all right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night, great couple of weeks, and we'll see you on February 5th.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Gary. Feel better.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.